A regular meeting of an episode of City Council's call to order on this 3rd day of July. And Council Chairman has left the record show all council members present. Welcome, thank you for being here this evening. We asked that you put your cell phones in silent mode. And a reminder to visitors, if you would please sign the form found in the back. If you wish to speak to a specific event item, put your name and address. The podium is, we must document all meeting business in March, limited to three minutes. Now before we get to the next item, we're going to have a special presentation. I'll show you on the board.
What I, I mean many of y'all, you're going to state your age if you remember Red Skelton. And I was following on the internet and I found this. And it's a little story he told about when he was in school around the 7th grade. And about the pledge of allegiance. And it's really a powerful and patriotic speech that he gave. And I thought I would just share that with y'all before we do the pledge this evening.
I remember a teacher that I had. Now I only, I went, I went through the 7th grade, I went through the 7th grade. I left home when I was 10 years old because I was hungry. And I used to, this is you, I work in the summer, I go to school in the winter. But I had this one teacher who was the principal of the Harrison School in Vincent, Indiana. To me, this was the greatest teacher, a real sage of my time anyhow. He had such wisdom. And we were all reciting the pledge of allegiance one day. And he walked over, this little teacher, Mr. Lasswell was his name. Mr. Lasswell, he says, uh... And he says, "I've been listening to you boys and girls recite the pledge of allegiance all semester. And it seems as though it's becoming monotonous to you. If I may, may I recite it and try to explain to you the meaning of each word? I, me, an individual, a committee of one, pledge, dedicate all of my worldly goods to give without self pity. Allegiance, my love and my devotion to the flag, our standard, oh glory, a symbol of freedom. Wherever she waves, there's respect. Because your loyalty has given her a dignity that shouts freedom is everybody's job. United, that means that we have all come together. States, individual communities that have united into forty-eight great states. Forty-eight individual communities with pride and dignity and purpose. All divided with imaginary boundaries yet united to a common purpose. And that's love for country. And to the republic, republic. A state in which sovereign power is invested in representative chosen by the people to govern. And government is the people. And it's from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people for which it stands. One nation, one nation, meaning so blessed by God. Indivisible, incapable of being divided, with liberty, which is freedom, the right of power to live one's own life without threats, fear, or some sort of retaliation. And justice, the principle or qualities of dealing fairly with others for all, for all. Which means, boys and girls, it's as much your country as it is mine. And now, boys and girls, let me hear you recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since I was a small boy, two states have been added to our country and two words have been added to the pledge of allegiance, under God. Wouldn't it be a pity if someone said that is a prayer and that would be eliminated from schools to...
Well, he was talking, he, that showed how he was, and when he was in the 7th grade, there were only forty-eight states.
Night invocation will be led by Mike Vaughn and then followed by the questions.
Oh gracious God, I, I am so thankful on the travels that I've been on and my eyes being open to see the disrepair of so many other cities about our size across this fair land. And come with a heart of thankfulness this evening, God, thanking you for the progress, thanking you for the leaders of this fair city. Thank you for the vision that you've given each of them that we continue to strive for excellence and not mediocrity. God, we thank you for the blessings you give us every single day. We ask, oh God, in this time, our land is parched and our souls are too. May you send the rain that might refresh us all, the land and the people. God, we give you all the thanks and praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the face of law, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks Mayor. Mayor and City Council, we have an update from Jose Cornea, our street director. He's going to visit with you just a little bit about some drainage work that's going on in his department.
This is Mayor of City Council. In the past, past two weeks, we, uh, started on this couple of projects, they actually, it's, this is, can you possibly, it's like a little video, we can do those pictures, but we didn't possibly make it time to appreciate it. So this is the ditch on 379, FM 379, it goes all the way up to 1-5. You guys kind of familiar with that? In the past, we've been on this ditch and, the, the, the overgrown on the, on the north side of it, it's, it's been so much and it's, uh, uh, we got to a point where it's actually stopped and a lot of work we've gone through. It's about 5,000 feet of ditch that actually drains, uh, the southeast, I'm sorry, the southwest part of the town. So I just wonder, we, uh, after we got the, uh, both more work, we've been actually working, if you can go on the next one with that. This, this picture, so I was actually on top of it. So this is kind of like one area in the middle where there's a lot of water still standing and we haven't had a rain in a while. Some of this a little bit there because of, uh, it was a water leak, but it's just too much. And just in order for me to get to it, I'm at, see the, the, that part is actually the center of it, so all those streets are overgrown way past the center of the ditch line. And if you go to the next one, you can see kind of where we, where we at on that. So basically, this one here, it's gonna take a lot, it's gonna take a long time for us to go, it's gonna take a little bit for us to get to it. I was in the picture that you see behind when you look, it was stopping. And that one is like, I'm actually sitting in the middle of it and you can't see anything else anymore. This is around the corner, that's where you get to the Rascals, where I put the 1-5. And it's just a whole lot of water in there. So I just kind of give a heads up on the project. You stop there right there, I'll be with you. Thank you. So that was kind of the, the drainage system 379 that I want to tell you a little bit about. We started, and hopefully we, by the end, well, probably in a couple of weeks, we can get all those lamps and everything, because we have to haul the lamps out of the way so we can be able to shoot the breaks and see how, how my stuff is in the ditch. And you gotta remember that if we do any work with Foster Street, that water is still gonna go, is gonna go into that ditch as well, so. And we gotta make sure that it's cleaned all the way through before we do any other work. The other pictures that look ahead on there, those are, I know we, I've been to some complaints about this, it's part of the drainage as well because the, uh, the water and the standard is down all over the place that we are working. We started last week, trying to spray all those weeds in between, we stopped a little bit. We've been trying to get them to, uh, it's been difficult, I was telling, I was talking to Brad this morning because when we start in the morning, it's calm, but then after that, it gets windy in a couple hours and then we have to, you know, develop it. But that's another part, and you guys, if you guys get any question or somebody questioning, we are working on it, we're trying to get it, um, get it done as soon as we can. Hopefully, I think we can get it done within a couple of weeks. And after that, we can sweep it and hopefully, uh, our street will be cleaned up like the way it's supposed to be. Uh, this particular picture here is on, on the, it's another project that we've been working on. Um, it's on the corner of Manley and Church Street.
Yeah, Manley and Church.
Um, yeah, if you go to the next picture. It's actually a, uh, there really has a lot of snow because there's something inside that park that came, we couldn't get to it. So every time it rains, you just push everything back in there and it gets, and it's ready, it gets rid of that, so it's evening up all the side of the curb and everything.
It's like an evil clown down there or something.
Yeah, actually, I just, I'm gonna put on the, the picture of it. So, you know, this is something that I've actually, I had a contractor to look at it and it costs us a lot of money, but I think we could work it, and I was just gonna fix a little bit of time to get it done. So far, we've, we've kind of figured out where the portions of the, uh, stop, so we're hopefully, if we clean up the whole intersection, we can get it done. And that's basically just those projects that we're gonna try to get done this summer. And I thought it was really, you know, important to invest, because I know sometimes you question and you know what's going on and that's part of it. We have several problems, but these are the ones that I think are really important to be working on. And then I guess as we go, in a couple of weeks, I think we'll get a little bit more of it, where we at.
You know, I think it would be important to say as well, part of our issues, a lot of times you notice landscapers and other folks, when they mow or trim trees or whatever, they, their leaves and everything, they blow into the street. Well, that, you can see in those photographs, that goes into the storm sewer, which also stops up the storm sewer. If we can, you know, and that's something that, in just a minute, I'm gonna introduce Emily, but maybe Jose can work on a, with Emily on some information to get folks to start. Blowing grass back into their yard instead of into the streets to help us with that and then to pick up their leaves or compost their leaves.
I've been doing a little recent ground live, but there's several cities that, that encourage them alive. It's a lot of, uh, communication, all the, I mean, we tell them about it, but sometimes they don't care. The more we communicate with them, we advertise it, and tell them how important it is that people are stoned and very clean, uh, they have to go look at them for us. And I did some research, there was a couple of cities, I might get some ideas from them to be able to, you know, talk to people. I know Corpus Christi was one of them, they got rid of that, where they're stoned and stuff, they have to go into it. Maybe Emily can, we can do something to help out our system.
And Jose, when people have a problem with their, not drainage, but with the grass in the streets, what do you recommend that they do? What do you want them to do? Call you? Call the city?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
Go to the website?
Sometimes you, you can, I know, I know it gets, I guess, assuming there's, there's a certain responsibility and we use, it's our responsibility. A lot of people do clean that part, a lot of people doesn't. And then we've been, uh, we do this once a year, a plus a year. We go out there, we spend a week, this year, this guy was a little bit, chips are a little bit behind, but we can provide. But if anybody, yeah, if anybody can do a little part of the street, it should be a lot easier. And it also has to do with sweeping. We have been sweeping as much as we used to, but we're finding a bit of a way. If we don't sweep, nothing, nothing, so it just, it just easier for us.
Is there any chance of the, we can borrow from another city, one of those big pieces of equipment, it's a giant printer, but, you know, steel wheel, can hack all those tree limbs off by that ditch?
Uh, it's a possibility. Talk to the, um, I wanted to talk to the county, they have one because they cleaned that ditch behind the industrial, they did a great job on that one, but I haven't really talked to nobody. Uh, we've been trying to do it ourselves with the machine, but as you see, it's just, it's just huge.
Yeah.
But, uh, we'll, we'll try it now, if we can, talk to the county and see if they have this option.
Thanks Jose.
Thank you.
Also this evening, I would like to introduce our new marketing and communications coordinator, Emily Gany. I'll let her tell you just a little bit about herself.
Hi, I'm Emily Gany, I'm the new marketing and communications coordinator. Like you said, I just graduated from Texas A&amp;M in May. And I have a lot of ideas, I'm really excited for this new position and I think we can kind of take the marketing and the things that we do to the next level with my own hands. So if y'all have any questions or need me to touch something, let me know and I'm, I'm your girl.
Thank you, thanks Emily. She's got a whole day under her belt, so. Um, also I want to announce.
And she's still here.
And she's still here, that's right.
My first day.
Spent a lot of time with me today and she's still here, that's.
Oh, that would be nice.
Right. Also want to announce Jonathan Sosby, our intern, uh, is gonna be an intern for another semester with us. Um, this time it's gonna count more for college credit. We, this was the previous one, the summer was for his gain, for him to gain more knowledge of becoming a, a community development director or a city manager or something like that. And so I signed some paperwork for him this week that says that he is going to get class credit now for the next semester for staying here and working with us. And so we've got some pretty big plans for him. Uh, we'll be working on some plans for us and some other things and learning from all the rest of the, the crew here. So we're excited to, to keep him on board a little bit longer. Um, also, the best of Grimes County awards went out last week, I believe, or the week before, whenever that was. And the city of Navasota received a few of those. First, we'd like to introduce, uh, the best law enforcement officer, Mike Mize. The best firefighter, Cooper, there he is. All right. And then the best park was Hillside Park. And the best local annual event was Texas Birthday Bash. So if we could get Cooper and Mize to come up, we'd like to take a photograph of you. Emily wants to put you on Facebook.
You did. Cost a lot of money.
All right, well, there you go guys.
Thanks to all that voted.
Many reports from council and boards or commissions.
We had a couple meetings, planning and zoning in the interim there, and they approved the final plat of phase two of Begon Lakes Estates. So that puts 76 more lots on the market. The understand from Mr. Hassel that, that the 74 lots in phase one are already totally committed, so it shows a lot of progress on that. They discussed the, uh, the comp plan and the goals for this year and of course, according to the comp plan, it's a matter of, uh, coordinating the, the, uh, comp plan with the zoning, particularly in the ag open areas in, in the city. Land use in the ETJ and the possible annexation of anything this year. So the first thing they're starting on is the gigantic task of going through all of the, uh, ag open areas in the city and knocking them against the, the comp plan and starting rezoning processes on those. They've started with a couple parcels of land up in the northeast growth area. And they'll then be picking off a couple at a time type thing as we go through the year. So it's a good start, but we'll be seeing more results of that later.
I'm gonna be out of town this Thursday and I believe the library board is, they're on my list if anyone can attend my actions. All right, just a couple things coming up. This Friday is our fourth Friday, right?
Woo! Yes.
And there'll be, as, as usual, there'll be lots of art on display, there'll be some music and some shops open late. Hope, uh, hope all the downtown businesses, uh, jump in and participate and invite the community to come out and shop after 5 o'clock. Saturday the 4th is a, I want to encourage parents and the kids to, to attend what is called Lit, it's Living in Triumph. It's a community-based event that has been in the planning stages for a few months. It's gonna be for 6th through 12th graders. And there's gonna be an opportunity there at the Broggi Auditorium from 10 to 2. Uh, the free food and drinks, we know that's what'll get you there. Uh, but parents are invited, but most of all, we want the kids to come, because this is gonna be an opportunity for our youth to talk to counselors, military personnel, different business type owners, financial, different things that they're going to see in their, in their future. And, uh, it's a real good opportunity, I think Brad and I have both been involved in, in the planning of this and they've got some great speakers that are lined up. And I just want to encourage the community to come out and support that campaign. Um, and that's August, that's August 4th, Saturday, at the Broggi Auditorium. And just a way for the community to support and, and, uh, show our kids, uh, some of the, some of the different things that they're gonna be encountering in their, in their future. But, uh, also having to do with, with our kids, we've got Back to School Health and Safety Day, that's on August 14th. That's 11 to 2 at Fairgrounds. It's been a pretty, well, every year that, that I can remember, uh, for, um, kids can come out and get, I think they'll have backpacks and school supplies and things for those that have a need for that. So be sure and get out there for that. Yeah, I understand that, you gotta, you gotta get there pretty quick, this stuff goes pretty fast, so be sure and go out there. They're gonna also have some booths out there for health and other education, so that'd be a good opportunity for, uh, kids to go with their parents and get some benefit from that. Item 5, recognition of the Navasota Mud Cats for 188 regional swim meet. Ms. Shelby.
Mayor of City Council, um, tonight, Patty Peterson's gonna give y'all, and say, these, some of the swimmers from the, some team went to the TAF Region 5, swam the early this month, and then this weekend, many of them actually qualified to go to the state games. So she'll give you some information.
Hi. Most of y'all know me, if you don't, I'm Patty Peterson. I wear many hats in town. One of the hats I wear is, and kind of, I took it on and took over as a, kind of a postseason representative for our TAF, which is the Texas Athletic, or Amateur Athletic Federation. This is part of a postseason thing, it's not part of our in-law, which is our normal swim league. These kids that are swimming for TAF are dedicated to it, they've been taking their whole summer. They get up every morning, Monday through Friday, and they're at the pool at 8:00 AM and they swim from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM and they do it five days a week. And they participated in regionals last weekend and I kind of wanted to share, um, which kids were able to, um, well, number one's the one that participated. And then to advance to the Summer Games of Texas, you had to score in the top three, first, second, or third. And we actually had several kids and some adults, they're gonna be representing the city of Navasota at the Summer Games of Texas, which this year and next year will be held in College Station at the Texas A&amp;M Auditorium. So not only are they getting to represent Navasota in the state games, they're gonna get to swim at A&amp;M, which is giga. That's an awesome, awesome thing for these kids, it's pretty cool, we've been there before. And so I just want to, um, I'm gonna introduce the kids and then we would love to have our picture with y'all for the paper. So afterwards, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, um, not all of the kids that are participating, as you know, my own kid is going to state, but he's a lifeguard at the pool, he's not here tonight. He's a workaholic like his mother. And so in the, um, girls 8 under 25 yard freestyle, Ms. McKenzie Parker took third at regionals. Here is Brian Peterson, he took 13th place in the 9 and 10 year old 25 yard freestyle. And in the 9 and 10 25 yard backstroke, we had a first place winner, we had Kyla Haddaway. First place, she's nine, nine. She's gonna go, she's gonna, she's gonna be awesome for the city of Navasota's women. And, and Ms. Elliot Cunningham, uh, Mr. Elliot, Ms. Elliot Cunningham took sixth place in that same division. In the 25 yard backstroke, boys, 9 and 10, Brian Peterson took sixth place. In the 13, 14, 15 yard backstroke, Taylor Lutzen took third place, Brianna Chagada took sixth place. Each of those girls are 14. The 8 under 25 yard backstroke, McKenzie Parker took second place. She will be advancing to state, like first, second, and third, those are all going to state. And then, let's see, we had Elliot Cunningham take third in the 25 yard backstroke, we had Parker Maddox take first in the 50 yard backstroke. Right? And the other winners, Callan Vikowski, which is also not here tonight, as y'all well know, she's on vacation with her father. And she took third place in a 100 yard IM, which is quite a swimming feat. And let's see, what else I have here. Parker Maddox, uh, Parker Maddox took first place in the 100 yard IM for his age division. And Taylor Lutzen took third in the 100 yard IM in her age division, Brianna took fifth in hers. Parker McKenzie took fifth for the 25 yard butterfly. Parker McKenzie took fifth for the twenty-five-yard butterfly, Kyla Hadaway took first again for the twenty-five-yard butterfly. Callan Kikowski took first place in the fifty-yard butterfly for her age division. Maddox Parker took eleventh, took first place for his fifty-yard butterfly. Taylor took second for the fifty-yard butterfly. And first place, Kyla Hadaway in the fifty-yard freestyle. And then we also took second place in that division, the fifty-yard freestyle, to Elliott Cunningham, they're not here tonight, the Cunningham's at the Martin Tile Store, if you ever wanna tell them how wonderful their kids are at swimming. And Parker took second in fifty-yard freestyle. And then our others, James Kimball took sixth for the fifty-yard freestyle. So the ones that are advancing to state is Riley Rutledge, McKenzie Parker, Kyla Hadaway, Kyla Linsken, Elliott Cunningham, Maddox Parker, Callan Kikowski. And then the ones that are gonna be swimming for us, as adults in their respective age groups, is Allison Sweeney, Brady Deheda, Ken Hallway, and Stephanie Cunningham. The, the TAF swimming is, is open from ages three to ninety-nine. If you're a hundred and you wanna swim, I bet they wouldn't turn you away, but it's open for all age divisions and it really, I think it encourages the kids even more when the parents try to participate. I did it one year and I have nothing but respect for them as swimmers. Our coaches are Will Smith, Self Kellumback, and Catherine Sweeney helps out too. Will is actually a state record holder in his, when he was eleven, he broke the state record and he still holds that record to this day. And so I kinda just wanted to let everyone know how excited we were to be representing the city of Navasota. Next weekend, the games kick off on Thursday, we have people starting to swim on Friday night at Texas A&amp;M. And swimming's the only event that we're representing this year, but I, at some point, really loved it as a city, we could represent other sports for the Summer Games of Texas too. But, and I'd love if the kids could come up, they all have medals, they're genuine in the back, I'm so sorry. So if we can get y'all's pictures.
Can you get on this side?
Really sorry.
You want to squeeze bumping the other?
Hands, come on everybody. We need to get Brad's in the lips.
Tony Mann.
It's George Moore.
Conducting public hearing to receive public comment and testimony regarding application to abandon fifty-one feet of Fraser Street right-of-way west of Block Ten of the HETC RR Edition. Open the hearing in six-thirty-five.
Mr. Mayor of the City Council, Gerald Chiselski called me this afternoon and was unable to attend this evening, so he asked me to represent him in his behalf. And really, this, this right-of-way came about after he submitted a development application for that corner lot, found out that he was gonna, you know, according to our ordinance, you have to put a sidewalk along all right-of-ways and since that is a public, open right-of-way, that was gonna be a requirement, so, you know, that obviously, it made sense for us to go ahead and, and close that, that right-of-way. And actually, it had already been previously closed, two previous times, once it was twenty-foot and another time nine-foot. So there's fifty-one feet left of this eighty-foot right-of-way and he has requested for it to be closed.
That, that goes nowhere.
Yeah, that goes nowhere. We did, we did clear with all the local utility companies, electric, internet, and there is nothing running through that right-of-way that would cause problems in the future.
And to adjoining property owners, they haven't argued over who gets how much?
Um, I don't believe so, not at that stage yet. Although the, the property owners on the right, they've already received twenty-nine feet, so they're probably gonna get another, I mean, I'm assuming they're gonna go half and half, but yeah, I don't know.
Need one else to speak to this in the hearing? Close the hearing, six-thirty-six. Item seven, consideration possible action on first reading, ordinance eight-fifty-one dash eighteen, vacating a portion of public right-of-way located west of Block Ten of the HETC RR Edition, seeing episode of authorizing execution of an instrument conveying said property to a party owner.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve first reading of ordinance number eight-fifty-one dash eighteen. Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, or second by Mr. Holtz to approve on first reading ordinance eight-fifty-one dash eighteen. Any further discussions? All voters say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Seeing none out of the gears. Item eight, consideration possible action on bid award for annual lawn care services. Mr. Stafford.
Mayor of the City Council, Mr. Dominique Lowery will be presenting this one this evening. He's excited. He's gonna do great.
Good afternoon, Mayor of the City Council.
Good afternoon.
Brad, Susie. Got a little handout for y'all. Before I get started, I could look over that right there. The bid award came out more than we had, we haven't bid this in five years. Uh, same company placed a bid this time. The cost is more, but we haven't bid in five years, so that's why the numbers are higher than it was the previous bid. What I handed you just a while ago, it was like, before I accept the bid, let's see how much it costs for us to get employees, trucks, trailers, lawn mowers. That's what this right here is broke down for. And it's right, right up, I don't know, the same ballpark, but you look at the maintenance lawn mowers, the cost of replacing lawn mowers, weed heaters and all of that, people being off, vacation, sick. With Green Team, if somebody's sick, they have the people to come in, they, we don't, we don't lose any business because they have enough people. But, getting nervous, I'm sorry. But it's like, the amount that's, that's shown, the two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, I see this a lot, but they do a good job. And when I call up something's broke, something's need to be fixed, they come right over, haven't had any problems with it, they're straightforward, you know, they were the only person that actually gave us a bid this year. And I see too, let's hire somebody, get the trucks and trailers, but it took us, took us two years in my department to hire two people that actually passed the background. So we take on, let's not get this bid and let's hire somebody. It took me forever to hire two people in my department because of ninety percent of people, they have a background, they can't work for the city. So I just, I know it's a lot of money for the contract, that's why we did the itemize and what it cost us to try to do it ourselves and try to save, but if sometimes you save money, it's gonna cost you money in the long run, then we'll be out of more than we'll pay the Green Team.
What did we budget for? This year, we're, we're budgeting that amount because we got, that's why we did it the way we did it, we, he, he and Sean actually put this bid packet together before we had a lot of rearranging going on and so that we could include this in the budget. We've always had it, we've had it in there for the last five years, as Dom said, but we didn't change the price in five years.
Oh, okay.
And we did have one bidder and, and I wanna touch on what Dom said as well. The one thing about it is, we don't have to worry if somebody's on vacation, we don't worry if somebody's sick, we don't worry if equipment's broke because they have a responsibility to mow our parks once, and all of our facilities once a week, regardless of what happens. If we hire people, which we used to do before we did this, when our equipment broke down, there were times y'all may remember that August Fourth Park got about knee-high, some of the other parks got pretty high because we couldn't get to it because we had people that were ill, we had people that were injured and then we had equipment broke down. So, and actually Dom experienced some of that when he first came here.
Yeah, because when I first started here, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday with mow grass, Thursday and Friday we did facility maintenance. So, and it's like sometimes if it rains a whole lot, we couldn't get to one, we're lacking one to get to the other. So it was then, they stopped letting us mow and they just gave the contractor what was mowing and we got all the facility maintenance stuff at a, at a minimum and we could control it.
Now, if I didn't understand correctly, you said in five years it hasn't, did we have a five-year contract with them?
We had a renewable contract for fi, up to five years. I think that's what, that's what we put in there again, so.
So it would be.
And they just, they held price for five years?
Yes.
And, and they've been really good, they worked with us when we had, when we had the reduction in force and everything, they actually cut back, we, they let us cut back on some of the things that we were doing and then we added some back.
I was gonna say, you know.
Because we've mowed it two times a week.
We also added little, little things here and there too.
We had, well, they charged, when we added something, they did increase their fee, but if we, as far as annually bringing in a increase.
We cut back on some things and they accepted the.
Right, they accept, they've accepted any and everything that we presented to them.
Every time we ask for something, they'll give us.
Cutbacks or?
Because it was twice a year, a man has only one time. So what was, what was actually paying is at the beginning, we just cut them in half. But it says, ah, we can't do that, they just, okay, we'll take it. We understand what y'all going through, you know, everybody have hard times and it's took it in Rome, you know, and I respect them as a company and patent, all of them as a man.
You know, really, you really also have to consider vehicles too, don't you?
It's in the, it's in the.
They're in there.
The internal trucks.
Oh, okay. But actually, I think this is.
But that number's pretty relevant.
I mean, that's, you're really congratulating for coming up with this, that's really awesome. And I'm totally in favor of keeping it at a bounce.
And I mentioned that two-fifty-four could jump up to two-sixty-four, not much more really.
Facts, pretty easy, yeah.
Yes.
Well, he, he didn't say it, but we pay laborers eleven dollars an hour. It took him two, he did say it took him two years to find two people to fill the road. I don't know how we'll find five people.
What does that say about our population?
I think it's very, it's a job.
Took that long, two people. It's for good money.
Well, it is good, you can drive around, see how they change out the plants, do stuff. I know I'm at a cemetery quite a bit and do a good job out there. I know when I was on my quarterly deal with the airport, there were some little claims that the airport said, but we got it corrected and made the airport committee the super pleased with that.
Dom's had, he's had people file claims on them and I mean, like instantly they're here, they pay for the damage.
Whatever it costs, he just, okay, how much? Okay, I'll see you. And they just take care of it, they, they said they're upon a business, I don't wanna see what you can handle, but small claims, unfollow management, change of people because it's customer service, they will evolve, good customer service.
Brad, what was the cost five years ago?
I think it was a hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Ninety-six, somewhere around in there.
I noticed there are business references, they list the College Station parks and the Bryant Parks, did they work for them too?
Yes, they have all the Bryant, all the College Station.
We're in good company there.
One thing that Dom has been talking to him about, he's gonna try to get finalized, he's gonna get him to start mowing later in the week instead of on Mondays, so that the weekends, the ponds are really freshly mowed.
I noticed one of the things dotted, the maintenance cost is when mowers run into something and break their spindles, there's no replacement for that and that's an expensive proposition. How many spindles do you have to replace?
Those spindles, when we was mowing grass, those spindles are like a hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, they're three-fifty now, replace one.
And that was when I started, like eight years ago. The price, you know.
That, that number is way low for the.
We just did like the base, the base, you know, just to give y'all a, a diagram and see, you know, put numbers in y'all, put in y'all hand, you know, to see where it's coming from.
I like it.
Yeah, because the concern is all, people always wanna know, can we do it cheaper?
It's hard to put a price on headaches too.
Well, he would have to take one of his current crew members that's experienced and understands what he's looking for and put them in charge of this, which would then in turn put somebody inexperienced in the crew again that he would have to take and train. It just takes a lot of time and takes people away from what they're doing.
Well, and something else that's not on here. These are the plans, it's.
Well, that's not included. We, we pay separate for that.
Separate, oh, okay, okay.
But we have that meant to do as well.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the contract to Green Team's Inc. in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
Second. Motion by Mr. Holtz, second by Mr. Horn to approve bid award for Green Team's for annual lawn care services. Any further discussion? All voters say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Seeing none out of the gears. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dom.
Item nine, consideration possible action on first reading of ordinance eight-fifty-two dash eighteen, amended chapter three, building regulations, like permit requirements to comply with House Bill thirty-three twenty-nine and increasing the maximum fine amount to violate one of the previously adopted technical codes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor of the City Council, it's me. Here we go, cleans up our language, man. All right.
For our amendments to the ordinances. To, as it said, we gotta fall in line with that state bill. Number thirty-three twenty-nine and increasing maximum fine amounts to two thousand. Now, these aren't the ones that I'd be writing, that's, that's the five hundred. These are the ones that got to the extreme where we had to give in front of them, this could hurt you. And cleanse it up for the electric, the electricians had a good lobby, so they got a few laws passed that didn't apply to the other trades, so we have to have kind of special ordinances for them. Any questions about it, y'all have a chance to look it over?
I, I'd like to kind of run through it, item, item by item. No, no, okay. A lot of it's just the same thing over and over again.
Over and over again, yes.
So on, uh. Two oh, three point oh two oh five five, it's just changing the penalty from five hundred to two thousand.
Correct.
Is that all it does on that one?
Pretty much it.
Okay. Uh, and oh two point one oh five, it's changing the five hundred to two thousand, plus it's taking out the. Second part of the, that. Has to do with the use.
Well, this has to do with the International Residential Code.
Yeah, but, but the, the old, the old section had an A and a B part and essentially this is just changing the A part and cutting the B part out. Okay. Two, two point one five two is, once again, a penalty from five hundred to two thousand.
Correct, International Building Code again.
International Building Code.
That is different from the International Residential Code, that's why we had to have doubled up.
Now, we, do we subscribe to that International existing building, building code?
That's for the commercial buildings, yes.
Okay. Uh, two point two oh one, once again, five hundred to two thousand. Two point two three one. Uh, we're changing the, uh, permits to building permits.
The wording to a electrical building.
Building permits in, in two places.
Because that's what requires falling under this statute.
Right, right. Uh, two point two three two, uh, we take out the police power. And no longer can the electricians be special policeman. Uh, two point two six one, once again, with building permits.
Well, what it does, it authorizes me to go in and look at it.
Yep. But that was there, the only change, the only change it made to it really is changing, changing, is putting building permits. Yeah.
Most of these, it's changing it from electrical permit to.
We changed from electrical permits to building permits or just plain permits to building permits, so.
It's like I said, it's the wording that had to change.
Okay. Uh, two, uh, two point two six two, we've removed. Uh, the old paragraph two, two six two and two six three, which had to do with the establishment of the inspection fees.
Right.
Cause they're covered otherwise and a failure to pay. And then it's a matter of just renumbering. Uh, two six two to two six four and two six three to two six five.
Three oh one is one, it still holds the exemption for the homestead.
Yeah, and that just makes it obtain a building permit rather than just a permit.
Well, it's still an electrical building permit.
Yeah.
But it's pulled by the homeowner, it's also registered homestead.
Right.
And he has to do it with his hands, that part. Really important.
So that's, in, in three oh one and three, three oh four, it's adding the building permit on all of those. Uh, three oh five is building permit. Three oh six is, and it's even in the title of it, it's changing the building permit fees and building permits. Uh, three oh seven, same.
Well, the notification, correct.
Yeah. Uh, three oh eight, once again, adding, just adding building permits, so it's a, that's the main thing. Uh, four oh two. It goes the, once again, the fine, this is now we're in the plumbing code.
Correct.
And this is going five, from five hundred to two thousand.
Yes, sir. Now, that's at the judge's request.
Right, understood, understood, it's just the maximum.
Yes.
It's maximum. Uh, gives him more, more flexibility.
Yes, sir.
And four forty-three, uh, once again, it's five hundred, two thousand dollars. Okay, now, do we, do we go by the International Fuel Gas Code?
Yes, sir.
I think we, we do.
Yes, sir, we have adopted that two thousand and twelve.
Okay. Uh, four seventy-eight, the International Mechanical Code, and once again, that's five hundred, two thousand dollars. And five oh three is the International Energy Conservation Code. And that goes from five hundred to two thousand dollars. So that pretty well, pretty well wraps it up type thing.
Yes, sir. And like I said, this is all at the discretion of our municipal judge, it says nothing.
Right.
This is when we actually add one. And I can't imagine it happened really, but that pushes past my little five hundred dollar deal that we've been talking about. And just flap refuses and bell city hall to forget, then we'll have to.
How much of those penalties does the state get?
Six.
Okay. And they raised it?
That goes to the municipal judge.
They allowed, allowed us to raise something that they don't get a piece of.
I don't know.
Wow. That needs to be in there.
It's not on their streets.
But I, I can't recall.
Ain't an off day.
In my ten years, I don't, I can't recall this ever to be used at once.
But it's where.
It didn't come.
Yeah, and it's all, they're all worded, fine not to exceed.
Yeah, and because usually the five hundred dollar deal gets everybody's attention, they just comply. But every one, like I said, once, maybe twice, but once for sure. That's all in my ten years. So. Any of this for the extreme case?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve first reading of ordinance number eight fifty-two dash eighteen, second.
Motion by Mr. Gass from section one, Mr. Holt, to approve on first reading ordinance eight fifty-two dash eighteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, none here. Item ten, consideration possible action on the second reading of ordinance eight fifty dash eighteen, amended chapter three, building regulations, section three point oh one oh oh two, permit fees. This is second.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve the second reading of ordinance number eight oh dash one eight.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Horn to approve on second reading ordinance eight fifty dash eighteen. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, none here. Item eleven, consideration possible action on nominations to the board of trustees of the Texas Municipal League, intergovernmental risk pool, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, annually you have the opportunity to nominate someone to this board of trustees. Um, currently places eleven through fourteen, uh, their term will expire on October first. Uh, Randy Chriswell, city manager in Canyon, is place eleven, Michael Talbot, board of the Lost Pines Groundwater Conservation District, is place twelve. Byron Black, Chair of the Central Abresal District of Johnson County, is place thirteen, and Pat Norris, Executive Board of North Tex Regional Planning Commission, is place fourteen. I do not know of anyone who, uh, has expressed an interest in, uh. Being nominated to run against any of these individuals. But if you wish to nominate someone, you have the opportunity.
We don't have anybody in this, in town here who's a acknowledged expert in this or anything to it.
Well, it's partly an ability, may or might be an expert. It's more meetings for someone to.
The board can do that.
I think it's good for it.
Sufficient qualifier. I only know one of them, Randy Chriswell, he does a great job, there's some others on the board that I don't know. If you don't want to nominate anyone, we don't have to, put it on here because you have the opportunity.
Brad, does anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah, we don't have any.
No, we don't, we just.
Nah, just don't.
No?
Just don't do it.
Only if we were gonna knock.
Oh, we're gonna do it.
Item twelve, you to sit in that sort of quarterly best report for quarter end, June thirtieth, twenty eighth of June.
Mayor, Council? In the back of the day was wrong, I had six thirty seventeen, I guess I have a new one for my official records. Currently right now, current balance is three million eight hundred and sixty thousand four ninety-six seventy-seven. In that, uh, maturity is we have one point four million in one, zero to one years, hundred and fifty-eight thousand in one to two years. One point nearly two million in two to three years and two hundred and forty thousand in three, three or more. Breakdown on that, we have a eight hundred and five thousand in the money market. We have six hundred and sixty-one thousand in investment pools. We've got fifty thousand in CMOs, uh, one point five million in CDs now, it's not, uh, money, uh, we, we need tax dependent CDs. And then seven hundred and seventy-three thousand in mortgage-backed securities. Change in market value was seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-two in the good for this quarter over the last year. Any question?
Why, the, the change in the, in the book value was about thirty-five thousand, why is there such a significant change between the. Change in the book value and the change of the market value?
I'm not sure on that, I'll have to look back. The book is much, probably, probably only what.
Well, I, I, yeah, probably has something to do with the bonds.
Well, I'd simply, it's a lot of CDs too, some of that.
It just seemed to be a big, big spread on the next time.
At least this time we're up, I mean, cause some of those ones right now, I love them.
Yeah.
We're, we're taking big hits on them, but we're riding out the curve. Like I have to keep, continue looking, we're always looking, trying to see what's out there, I want, I'd like to move some more of that eight hundred and five thousand into something other than the money market, but. Take it back, I guess, I'd like to go back.
Well, money markets ought to be getting a little bit better, the interest rates going up a little bit. Bonds should be as well.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Lance.
Item thirteen, workshop home budget for eighteen nineteen, Mr. Scott.
The City Council, I'm gonna let Lance start talking and I'm gonna pack something in there while he's talking.
The figures are ready, I'll pack it from the last time, I had maybe changes, uh, Friday, city manager myself sat down, uh, we're trying to put some figures in. And we're close to budget, about, um, I've got to do a little more clicking, I'll be out tomorrow and Wednesday, I'll be out Thursday. So I'll send y'all the new spreadsheet with everything in there, Thursday, hopefully it'll be done. Uh, right now, we're looking at sixteen million ninety-six eight hundred. Close around the one final figure. And then Brad's got some stuff he's gonna talk to you about. Again, we did have the new products for the brass contract already included in there.
We also included a three percent increase, because I told you all last time that we had the, uh, increases in CPI and in municipal, uh, cost index. Uh, so we kind of rounded it around and did a three percent, proposed a three percent increase on utility rates. Also.
I haven't talked to the President yet, we're both.
Right, we did get our, uh, values this, late this afternoon, we got our values and they have gone up about thirty thousand dollars. Um, thirty thousand, thirty million dollars. I think at the last city council meeting, I told you it might be forty, but that was just counting if those forty-five homes, I'm just kind of a rough guess, so. Um, but we continue to hear talk of a need and you saw Jose talk to you tonight, of needs for street work, drainage work. Um, you know that you have a lot of potholes. So, um, Jonathan and I sat down, put some numbers together. Regarding, um, what would it take to put enough people in place to run a patching crew? Basically, four to five days a week, keep a street sweeper running regularly. Uh, but while also mowing, picking up brush, uh, taking care of those ditches and cleaning out the ditches. Um, so we figured you would need to promote three employees to equipment operator. And then repl- and then put in three, uh, employees, do you have that other packet? You didn't bring it in. So, basically, we put that together, that would cost roughly three hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year. To generate enough revenue off of your tax rate to do that, you would need to increase taxes, this is just rough estimate right now, eight cents. Eight cents on your current tax rate, that's today's tax rate, that is not our effective rate for this coming year. Because we, like we said, we have not sat down with the appraisal districts yet. That would bump your tax rate to sixty-three point nine two, almost sixty-four cents. That would require a rollback election, which would cost you about seven thousand dollars to operate a rollback election. And, uh, but it would cost, uh, I kind of broke it down, on an average home, you would add about ninety-one dollars annually, seven dollars monthly. Your other option, you could add to your street and drainage fee nine dollars and fifty-one cents, I'm not sure that's very palatable. But I'm not proposing this, I'm merely laying this out there in case you want to talk to constituents and ask if they are. Interested in doing this. Um, I thought it would be interesting, I know that Councilman Fultz and I spent a lot of time, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, in a pretty good discussion about streets, street maintenance. And, uh, it kind of made me think, well, we can, we can put a proposal out there. So we're putting a proposal out there, if you're interested in looking at it. Talked to the mayor a little bit about it last week, kind of wanted to see, see his reaction.
Part of it is, I think a lot of citizens may not be aware that they can actually call and. Let the city know that they have a pothole. I mean, I don't, I don't know that a lot of them know that they could just do that and it'll get put on the list, you know? Be dealt with, instead it just kind of. You just hear, just general, for streets, you know, you just.
We, we tried to remedy that, cause that came up as well, so when Lucero was here, she put out a little press release encouraging people to report. And we talked about it in, uh, council retreat. I don't, I didn't ask Daphne and I don't know if anybody's talked to her, she, I haven't seen an increase in reports or anything, certainly haven't. I think you're, you know, a lot of times people don't report, they assume that we're gonna drive it down the street.
We've seen it, so they can do it online or.
They, they can do it online. Um, the police department has also set up where every officer is, is, as they drive through town. If they see a brush pile, if they see a pothole, if they see anything out of. if they see a brush pile, if they see a pothole, if they see anything out of place, they are mailing that in as well. So that's a, you know, another setup, several sets of eyes, I think the fire department's also, uh, doing that as well. Other departments are trying to do it, it's just, they're still, even, you know, if you drive around, he could put a patching crew on the ground five days a week. And we'd get caught up eventually, maybe. Wouldn't you say? At some point? Because you always have street cuts, you know, utility street cuts, you have-
I don't know the difference between, I mean, I, I do know the difference between Donald and Jose. The question is, if we're having a problem, can we hire employees to do that? I mean, we just were told that we can't, and so to think that we're gonna get another crew is probably not, even if, even if the money was there, we still wouldn't be able to hire people potentially.
Well, and I talked to Lance about this earlier, yes, first, your first problem is finding three more guys to hire, or three more employees to hire. Also, because that would probably trigger a rollback election, you couldn't have the rollback election until November. And then you, you wouldn't receive your money till later, so you wouldn't be able to hire anyone till almost the end of the fiscal year, by the time it's all said and done. So it wouldn't do you any good till the next year. But, I mean, it's a start, if that's what you want.
It's longer than that, because the tax would come in January, would, it would accrue in January, but wouldn't be paid until a year after that. So you're talking about a year and a half lag time.
Point, with the revenues are right now, it'd be a cyclical cycle where you have to go up, make sense, the next year, just keep going.
I mean, and it's all doable, there isn't-
Well, but you still-
Taxpayers are willing to pay.
And you still wouldn't be able to address when I say mine. The one that is, says they needed the most, or the, the one, you know, there's always, it's gonna always be a it just might get, that one's a little faster.
Sooner, right. But I think you're correct, it's difficult to find, because those are laborer jobs, those are eleven dollar jobs. Employment, unemployment levels are at the lowest they've been in years, so there's not a lot of people looking for that type of job.
And we, we've discovered that dominoes will not help with that, right?
Well, we don't have dominoes in town, I wondered if they would do it even though-
You get lots of questions about that.
...
See, we can get economic development, get dominoes in town, so that they-
Patch our streets. School buses.
Trash trucks.
A lot, a lot of that.
Cost of an election, seven. I mean, it's a good sign that your values are increasing. That's, you know, directly related to those new, forty-five new homes that were permitted last year.
Maybe we'll double that.
You've got new businesses that are gonna, right, that are gonna be kicking in the next one. So. Of course, you know, that, that doesn't really change a lot, because you're-
But to look for income, to look, look for, for income from, from the abhorrent tax and the tax rate is strictly long-term. Just because of when it goes in and, and when that money comes aboard, so-
Yeah.
That's not a quick fix.
It wouldn't be.
Quick fix, you gotta look at something else.
But I felt like you should-
Yeah.
Everyone should see that, and then, I mean, the quick fix is you do your strict and drainage fee, but I'm, I'm not sure.
We've just done that.
And that's a-
Little source for it.
To get, getting closer to the balance, what was, what are some of the things that have been nixed?
Well, most everything is nixed, except for necessities. Yeah, we have necessities. We did see an increase, what, what helped us is whenever we started figuring our utilities, you know, we did a little bit better, we're doing a little better, we'll have, uh, Century Asphalt onboard before too much longer. That'll help. Other industries hopefully have picked, but that, we have seen an increase in, in gas usage recently. Of course, a hundred and five degree weather's really helped water sales as well and stuff.
And we did make a call to the comptroller last, last week.
Last week.
And I've got, the lady's getting, getting a bunch of figures together.
She said it was gonna take her a while to research what we asked, but we were trying to, we told her what we were trying to do, we're trying to find out why most of our retailers are telling us that their business is up, however, our rebates are down. And we, we told her we knew we could attribute a little bit of that to gas sales, but we're past that point now, because it's, we're not below last year's gas sales now. So that's, that's not part of it anymore.
And I'm glad they're willing to do some digging.
Well, she had us doing a lot of digging, and we, it was everything we had done, and finally, we missed her, we needed to know.
We don't know what else to do.
Right, and so she said, well, let me-
They have the data.
She was gonna run some other reports and do some research, and then call us back, so.
I guess it's-
I, I hope we hear from her this week.
I hope it will.
I mean, the sales tax, the office figures, that's all public information.
Except for what, each individual pays?
Not the individuals.
Yeah, we, we can't get the individual pay. And that's, that's what makes it hard, you know, so we can't say, oh, business X-
Sales are down.
Sales are way down, or something like that. But the good part is, we've got you, you know, we're going to present you a balanced budget, probably next to the city council meeting, for final tweaking, and then we'll be ready for adoption. Um, we'll also, uh, we would like to know what you feel about the rate increases for utilities, before we go any further as well.
Well, they're just, they, they, there's, there's not, you're just covering the additional costs with the CPI, you're not. We just don't want, we don't want to get behind on that again, like we did a number of years ago. And then that gentleman takes that much. Big jump, so. Personally, I'd rather see us just keep with the tracking, no more, just, you know.
A few pennies here and a few pennies there, because that way-
Just to cover the, the cost, I mean, you gotta cover the cost.
And I'll, it, we'll bring that to you with all the breakdown of how much the difference that's gonna make. We're working on that, but get it completed.
We didn't raise, we didn't raise the gas prices last year.
No.
We raised the water and sewage.
We did raise water and sewage just a little bit.
Yeah.
But we did not raise gas. But it goes back to that conversation we had a few weeks ago, where, you know, our cost doesn't go down. I don't know how we can reduce our cost to, to anyone else, if we, if our cost doesn't go down.
I'll be sending out that spreadsheet once again.
Sounds better.
Anything else, I'm good.
Does y'all have any questions?